Started tonight, seven o'clock. This is the regular meeting in the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees. It's Tuesday, February the second, and the time is 7:02 PM. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, I'd like to have a moment of silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, sheriff's deputies, as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Roll call, Tracy.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee McMahon. Trustee McGofflin.
Present.
Okay. In addition, looking at the participants on this Zoom meeting, I see user 10034312. We have Bruce and Linda Raleigh on here. We have Chief Wilcox. We have Dana Jones. We have Doug Wright. We have Mr. Calligan. We have Joyce. And we have Mr. Wolf, present in the meeting. Okay, first on the agenda.
Uh, Trustee McGofflin's here. Did you see Trustee McGofflin?
In roll call, we took your name.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. And we have Tracy Edwards.
Thank you.
Please wave to the audience. Okay. We've got a review and approval of prior meeting minutes. There's no meetings, meeting minutes to approve at this time. All business. Resolution 21-002. That was a tru- that was, uh, the resolution to move forward with the work on Station 59. Uh, trustee, this is entered just for the record. Uh, it was signed by me and Mr. Mann. Uh, Mr. McGofflin, did you want to sign that resolution?
Uh, yes, I do. After we get the question in the resolution answered, I believe Steve was supposed to find out from legal counsel whether or not who was, who was supposed to, uh, finance this. Uh, Mr. Wolf, did we get ahold of legal and find out, uh, if this is going to be COVID money or fire department money?
The legal counsel said you had to pass the resolution first for, and then he would make the legal answer. So, so we were wait- Mr. Peterson and I were waiting on new trustees to sign the past resolution that was passed, as is. And then, and then we were going to then get the answer, but I, I, I can't give you an answer. You have to sign the document first before the legal counsel can act.
Okay, but, and, and the worst already started. Okay. Okey dokey, to answer the question, yes, I do want to sign. I was in there earlier and signed checks and POs and everything. It was in the box. If it's put in the box, I'll sign it.
Uh, can, can I just say something on this? Whatever you guys decide, when it's all said and done, this CARES Act money must have the opinion from the lawyer in my files because we will get ding, that money will be taken away from us. I have to have that opinion in my files because it's a requirement. If there's questionable, um, issues on anything for money, and you went to the lawyer, because the opinion must be in the file. And you can have the documentation. I can pull that up if you need it. But it says it clearly that the, if you need legal counsel, you must have the opinion in the file.
Okay, and something, uh, Resolution 21-002. Number one, th- th- there was never a question of whether the work was going to stop or continue. The resolution deals with which direction we go on paying for it so we can, uh, cover the expenses on the project. So with that, we're not going to have to have another vote on how this is paid. The legal counsel's going to tell us which way to go with this. And the rest is just going to be a matter of, uh, paying the bill from that account.
No, no, it won't. If I don't have a contract from them, just like, I'm gonna bring it up again, Calumis Center. I need a contract. You can't just do work without a contract. And again, no permit to pull. Do I have to remind you again what you did here?
Well, you're not the project manager for this job, Tracy.
You don't have a project man. Who's the project manager? You? You didn't have a project manager for the other job. Who's the project manager? This is my township money as well. The citizens want to know where their money is. I'm sure that Bruce and Linda will speak up and, and anybody else who's in this township, because I don't know everybody, maybe Joyce is. But I don't know, but I'm sure they want to know where their money is and who's managing the project.
And, and also, go ahead, go ahead, Tracy.
I'm done.
Well, and, and the question was also raised when this was started. Uh, we have a resolution on the floor, I remember the number, that they should have had three bids, and they did not. I've made comments about how high this price is with not a work being done, and I keep getting excuses, but there weren't, there simply was not three bids given for a price, a job of this size.
It was bid out with the co- there was a competitive bid from Bilbrey on this. And you can laugh all you want, Mr. McGofflin.
But it's Trustee Mc- it's Trustee McGofflin. They showed me, they showed me the paperwork. Was that, is that part of the record?
I should have that in my file.
Is it, yeah, is that part of the record? Wh- where's the bid?
It all came from the meeting. We should have a copy of it in the record. If you don't have it, that's your fault.
Give it to the township clerk.
Well, number one, that was brought forward by fire. And I believe Mr. Wilcox was working on that. So he was working with that bid.
Mr. Wilcox does not have access to video because Buckeye's camera and Buckeye's microphone does not work. He is online. I guess he can listen, but he cannot make it defend himself. So I think it's unfair for you to put him on the line to defend himself.
Well, since, uh, we have a trustee and fiscal officer fighting the whole issue.
No fight.
Of getting that fire station open, okay?
Wilcox is online.
Chief Wright.
I just.
What happened directly across from Station 59 this week?
It was a fire. You don't know?
Okay, so we now have a monument and a reason to have that fire station open while we have all these.
We didn't ask for, we're not asking for anything about a fire station not being open. We're asking for paperwork in the records. Why are you fighting to get paperwork in the records?
Paperwork's already there.
No, it's not in my records. Nobody gave me anything. I'm the fiscal clerk. I keep the township records. Where is it? Who gave it to me? Nobody found it, uh, uh, reason to give me anything. If you three trustees, meaning Mr. Mann, Mr. McGuire, or Mr. McGofflin have the paperwork, why isn't the fiscal clerk having it in the township records? You telling me that it's there? Where's the fact? Where's the proof that I was given that?
You were in the meeting, right?
I did not get it in my folder. Do you understand? Did you not give me everything that you guys get?
I was in the meeting, and I didn't, I did not see any copies of any bids, uh, even Ship's bid. I didn't see any bids, any copy of any, any project work being done. We saw, we were told that the final price was forty-seven thousand some change, and that's all we were told.
I'm sorry for being late. It took a while to troubleshoot this camera they installed here that they didn't get set up. But I heard you say something, Trustee McGuire, uh, asking that Chief Wilcox was in charge of what, please?
Did you bring the bid from Bilbrey? Did you coordinate that?
I made contact with them and met them and their representative down there to do measurements. But they emailed it, and I passed it on to the administration.
Okay. So you initially got the bid from Bilbrey?
Um, I made, I was told to make contact with three different vendors. I called them and met them down there and gave them my email address. They gave me, uh, they emailed it to me, and again, I passed it on to up above me.
Good. Any other issues on all business at this point?
Still the issue with, you brought up the fact that that bill should automatically be paid, and it will not automatically be paid, again, until I get a contract, whether we get three bids or not, until I get a contract that you guys are supposed to have because I've already called CG Construction, and he's waiting, he was waiting for you to sign it and get it back to him. Didn't sign that contract, whatever that contract might be, because he didn't give it to me. He said he sent it to you guys. I don't have that contract, and you guys were hard on permits. Where are the permits for that building? All they need to be in my records. I'm not holding anything up. I'm just following the rules. And you just can't, you can't brush it off and move on. Somebody needs to answer that question. The citizens are on, waiting to hear your answer, Mr. McGuire, President, Trustee McGuire.
Well, we don't have the contract at the meeting, so I guess we don't have the answer to that question. However, I do know that the scope of work covers permits. We're not, okay, let me ask you this. You have cut how many checks to this company? This is not new to Jefferson Township. Okay? So you don't have a problem with CG and Construction on?
They're doing.
Some of their work, but you have problems with this?
They're doing vehicle maintenance. They're not doing building, uh, remodeling a building. We need a contract for it.
Well, they've done, they've done road repair for us in the past. They've done patches.
I cannot pay them for road repair. I paid them for vehicle maintenance.
Well, what about Fornie Road? They went out and did an after-hours work out there to fix a cave.
There was nothing I got on that. You gotta, you gotta show me, show me that, show me that, yeah.
Well, you're questioning a company. There's not an issue of whether or not.
I'm not questioning the company. I'm questioning the trustees signing a contract that the company told me that gave to you guys. I'm not questioning that company at all. I'm questioning where's the contract? Why are you twisting my words around?
And I still.
Are you trying to avoid the issue? Because that's exactly what it's.
And let's, let's also revisit the fact that it is a conflict of interest for him to do any work for Jefferson Township. He stated in the public meeting that he would never work for us again. That is, uh, in public record. And then it was also stated and talked about in the meeting about you being best friends with the owner. And then you threw up in my face that I worked for him for X number of years. So it was a conflict of interest for either one of us to vote on work or handwork to this, this, uh, company to do it as a conflict of interest, and it is not ethical.
Well, we've already covered that with legal. There's no conflict of interest.
You, you covered it with legal? Where's the paperwork?
You're fighting it. I mean, you don't want CG&E to do the work. That's clear by your.
CG&E.
They were awarded the work.
That's not even the case.
It was bid out legitimately.
That's not even the case. We just want the paperwork, and you keep avoiding getting it from the lo- legal. Is it because legal didn't say what you guys are saying in this resolution? And you want somebody to sign when you don't have any proof? This, this is not, um, this is just not legitimate at all. Legitimate. Because in this resolution, say that, um, in the last capital letter, approved by legal counsel. That Station 59 was funding source approved by legal counsel. And then Mr. Wolf says he's not going to approve.
You see, you're, you're doing an argument like a trustee.
I don't care. I'm telling you, I'm doing it like a citizen. I'm not a trustee. Do you not realize I'm not a trustee? Like Mr. Wolf is not a trustee? They don't take the place of Mr. Mann. Now, Mr. Mann, Mr. McGuire, Mr. McGofflin are trustees. I'm a citizen and a fiscal officer. I'm telling you how I read this resolution.
Mute Ms. Sidewards. She, she is disrupting the meeting.
This is not, you can't, um, mute me. I can unmute myself. You can keep muting me if you want.
Oh, I'm muted?
Um, we are muted.
Keep shoving his back against the wall.
Okay, we're moving on.
Didn't solve anything, as usual.
Okay, any new business?
Why is the firefighter?
Trustee McGofflin, do you have any new business?
Not at this moment.
Mann's not there?
No.
Nothing can be voted on tonight, then?
Okay, any other new business? Going once, going twice? Okay, we're moving on to fiscal officers' report. Host, please unmute Tracy Edwards so we can get the fiscal officer's report. Okay, do we have a fiscal officer's report? Okay, second call for fiscal officer's report. Okay, Mr. McGofflin, would you like to make a motion to pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, and warrants?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pay the bills, warrants, appropriations.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGofflin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to resolutions. I don't see anything on the agenda. Department reports. Zoning, Mr. Calligan. Unmute Mr. Calligan, please, for his report.
Here we go. Good evening, everybody. Uh, there's not much of a report. We did issue two zoning certificates last month. I met with a couple of citizens on different, different issues and responded to all the telephone calls and emails I received.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Code enforcement, Tony McKee, is he present?
No, he is not, Trustee McGuire. He was out plowing, uh, with the road department, which is partially his job, so he could not be here tonight.
Thank you. All right, uh, fire department report. Fire department report. Please unmute Mr. Wright.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We had more than a working structure fire last week across from Station 59. Um, one male had, uh, first and second degree burns. He was transported to Miami Valley Hospital. We're still waiting on a new generator for Station 60. We have no standby generator in the event that the electric goes out. Uh, the one that was there is the one that caught fire and was covered by insurance. We had an electrical problem with one of the medic units. Um, we're waiting on a new piece to come in to fix that problem, and it should be in a lot of part of the week. Um, and we're waiting on word on the quick attack engine when we are to be receiving that. We've interviewed, um, six people last couple of weeks, new people. That will be ten or eleven that we've interviewed in the last few weeks. Uh, Chief Wilcox has been doing a fantastic job of doing that, getting with the people and getting their equipment and everything. Um, we had one, one of our arson investigators in the school down in Tennessee. Uh, he said it was very educational, and that is about it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we got the sheriff's report during the work session. Uh, road and administrators' report. Mr. Wolf, please unmute Mr. Wolf. You're on.
Good evening, trustees, fiscal officer, and the community. Um, in your package, you have the road department reports, trustees, plus the, uh, the administrator's report. Um, obviously, everybody knows it's been snowing, and, uh, and our road department has done an excellent job staying ahead of the snow. Uh, we've had no breakdowns of our equipment because of the preventive maintenance done by our part-time ODOT mechanic that has been doing a lot of work on our preventive maintenances so the trucks are ready to go. Um, and, and no injuries or, or those kind of things. So we're very happy at how we've come through this last menacing couple of days of ice and then the snow. The biggest showers next week will be zero degrees temperatures as a hot, that's not wind chill. They're projecting something in a range of twenty, eighteen to twenty degrees below zero with wind chill. Salt doesn't work. Below maybe sunshine of a twenty-five to thirty-degree day. So we're looking at working with ODOT and working with the county engineers on suggestions. We'll be mixing some, uh, uh, materials in with the, with the salt or be going with sand itself during that cold period so the roadways will have some grip. So they look a little bit like having some browning of the roads, and people might wonder what's that browning? It's going to be some sand or material that, that we're getting from those two organizations that will work to at least get us into what snow hits the ground. Because the temperature of the roads are going to drop down around ten or fifteen degrees, and, and that will not heat up in the sunshine, even if we get sun for two days. So we're doing what the county and the state are working on. The county is really working on that, that, that mixture. Um, the, uh, so, and from the road department to the administration, I've been with, uh, the sheriff. Two of our cameras that we use for, uh, uh, reset dumpings around the township and, and whatnot got knocked down and stolen. We filed a claim that the insurance company got the word today that we're receiving a claims check minus our deductible, and that we'll be giving back with you trustees, myself, and, and, um, Captain Flag to ask you to repurchase two replacement cameras, uh, because obviously they irritated how it was dumping in the areas that we were, we had them deployed. Um, the second bill is, um, the, uh, Federal Signal Company, um, has contacted us about, we're, we're at least two years in on the sirens that were received through the FEMA grant and through CBPG. We have three sirens in total. One down by the, on Union Road, one at Station 59 on Dayton Liberty, and one behind the Parks District's building on Infermer. Uh, there's no maintenance that have been done to those sirens since they were installed, and, and the paperwork's been sent to different departments for whatever reason, never made it to the administrator. So I now have an author that's come to us that I'll prepare for you trustees to look at. I'll be sending it out to all three of you.
All three of you?
To pursue, uh, a general maintenance program on those sirens, which were worth about twenty-three thousand dollars each. Uh, they're a year investment in rural ownership. Um, so the next thing on sirens, uh, we've been able to get this old siren to start and run at Station 62, which is the new road office. Um, uh, used to be a volunteer siren, or they set the siren off when they were called. That siren, uh, it was, uh, uh, maintenance this week by the road department. Uh, no matter how cold it was, they were up there. Um, there's an option through Federal Signal to put a, a, uh, an activation box on it and make it part of our siren system. It'd give you three sirens, and one main one, and that siren would service the Blairville neighborhood. Um, if, uh, but again, I don't know what the cost is. So I want to make sure that trustees are able to see first and secondly what the expenses are of the general maintenance, and what it would be to be able to put that siren in the place as your first protective siren for the community. Um, and I'll be getting that out to you in the next week. There are two things that refunds that are coming in to the township. We may have already received one, but I want you to know that we have new revenue that was not expected coming back to the township. And I don't have the amounts, but one is the refund that is huge coming back from the Bureau of Ruption's Compensation to all commercial and public entities. Um, and then number two, um, the Montgomery County Auditor is refunding, um, excess fees that they charge this over the years for real estate assessments for each of your parties. So we're getting refund checks back from these two parties. One of the things that, that it stated, um, and, and it was actually discussed today in the Ohio Township Association Conference, but it was brought up locally at the MCTA, the, the Montgomery County Township Association meeting by Washington Townships, um, um, CPA, and, and also the fiscal officer named Gary Smiga. He said that the state auditor, and, and now the county auditor has admitted, has, has, uh, validified it, that your refund checks from the BWC, which is very large, can come back to the general fund only. You do not have to split it out. In years past, if there was a refund, we would split it out per department. The state auditor, because of COVID, they're allowing that one-time deposit. If you choose to do it, it's a choice, but you can really help your general fund by putting that deposit. So I've inquired about the paperwork to give to you trustees, um, about, you know, what says you're allowed to do that, and then you can decide as a trustee where you want that check deposited. Even if it's deposited differently today, you're allowed to move it. But I would suggest that you do the BWC check into the general fund because that is your weakest and smallest fund. So that will be, I'll be giving more information to you soon. Tomorrow, we find out how much the real estate refund is. They'll be sending that out to Tracy on the, on the helm. Um, let's see. There's another, in the work session, we covered, uh, uh, about the liquor permit. I sent an email out to all three trustees asking if we wanted that permit to be issued or not, and I did not receive a response. and I did not receive a response back. Um, and so we missed the deadline date to challenge it. There is a conditional permit, uh, been issued for that location, but that permit is still conditional, and, uh, not all the pieces have been applied or have been complied with. But because there was no response, you can't hold that as a reason not to issue the liquor license. So that owner will receive his liquor license even if the permit doesn't go through. So, yeah, we're going to have a problem that we might have to address down the road, we may not. I want to bring that up to you. Um, Tracy brought up to you, and she was very concerned about this in the, in the work session, and I want to reiterate what she said. She wanted to know when you trustees are going to get together and have a, a work session over the budget, the temporary budget. And I, I share that same request. We need to sit down and look at that temporary budget and make sure whatever may not seem right or may seem right, or we need to add some things, now's the time to do it. That's why you trustees voted, um, at the end of December to go to temporary. So you're allowed to make changes to the budget, but you have to agree at least two, two or more votes of trustees to make a change to the temporary budget. So it's you three trustees that have to decide the final budget, and then we can, you can pass another resolution in, you know, before the deadline and make it permanent. But you have two steps there. You have to meet, you have to decide what you want to keep. You may keep everything and not change anything, that's your option, but you have to do it. And then you have to pass a resolution to adopt it. And then Tracy can do her job by notifying the local officials at the county. Um, that's all I have for my report at this time.
Okay, that covers road and administration, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to comments by citizens. Uh, this is where, uh, the audience can address the trustees. You have three minutes. Uh, once you have your mic on, you need to identify yourself and read your name and address into the record before you begin. Host, when we hit three minutes, please turn off the mic. I'm going to go through the list, since we don't have, uh, since we don't have folks, uh, to give a sign in sheets. So let's start with, uh, Bruce and Linda.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dana Jones.
How you doing? My name is Donald Jones. I'm actually, um, sixty-six, twenty-eight West Third Street, um, Legacy Bar, um, the liquor license lesson question. And, um, I just chimed in today to answer any question that, you know, you guys may have, that maybe I can provide some clarification.
Um, thanks for asking. This is Tracy.